To order the March 20th meeting of the Chagrin Falls Board of Education. Ms. Lucott, would you please take the role? Mrs. Garvey, here.
Mr. Rankin.
Here.
Mrs. Bros.
Here.
Mr. Kanzinger.
Here.
Mrs. O'Toole.
Here. Will you all please join me and stand to face the flag with flag allegiance. My flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is that for you? I'm sorry, I need to go. I said that and then I didn't have something pulled out that I might have already. Okay. This is one point in our meeting where we invite public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to the board? If there is, then I have a few guidelines that I'd like to share. I'm going to go ahead and read this comment because I had a parent email me who would like to have a statement read on her behalf. She was not able to be here tonight. So as you all know, community comments are one way for citizens to communicate with the Board of Education. When you're called upon, please stand and state your name, address, and topic. You'll have three minutes to speak. Remember, this is a formal and official meeting of the Board of Education, and what you say becomes part of the official meeting report. If your comment involves a problem with a student, an employee, or a board member, please do not address them by name. Keep in mind, we are meeting in a schoolhouse and possibly in the presence of students. At this time, the primary role of the Board of Education is to listen and reflect on your comments. Sometimes board members may respond or ask questions, but not always. Whether we respond or not, your input is valued. So this came from Beth Harbaugh. I know she lives in Kensington Green, but I don't know her exact address. Beth wanted to share that she's disappointed by the choice in book. Sorry. The sixth grade, it's called Mission Mumbai: A Novel of Sacred Cows, Snakes, and Stolen Toilets by Mahabhav Narasenian. And I'll just read the last few paragraphs of her note. "We're not in a diverse location, and the way the world is headed right now, I was hoping for my son to have the opportunity to appreciate how someone else lives, what wonderful people, traditions, and ways of life there are somewhere far from America. This book, however, was not that. Even aside from the disappointing description of the culture, I was unhappy with the way the family is represented as mostly dysfunctional, unloving, unsupportive, and something to be avoided. I very disappointed in this book as a choice for Chagrin, which I've come to admire for the advanced curriculum. I hope the board will read the book before deciding to make it part of the curriculum for more years of sixth graders. I know that the book is supposed to be funny and relatable to the kids and not a serious sketch of India, but there were so many plot elements that were disturbing, unnecessarily gross, that I would have the hope we could find something that is more empowering, encourages more respect of others who might be different, and I think it's important we start fostering a new generation that respects all cultures and all people. I do not feel that this is worthy of my sixth graders is, I'm sorry, I do not feel that this is what my sixth graders got from reading this selection. I just cannot let the vote happen without voicing my concerns and disappointment with this selection. There are so many plot elements that I think reinforce negative messages that I would not want to give my child. Even setting aside the description of India, which in my opinion is very negative, I am uncomfortable with the message that the boys are traumatized by a mentally ill man who is stalking them, that they have to forgive him because of what would become of him if they turned him in. I do not like the message that in multiple family relationships in the book, family members let each other suffer, how they do not support each other, and how badly they treat each other. Finally, I think it's unfortunate to have such attention put on wealth and implying that money equals success and those without money are second class, second to those with the money, that the wealthy deserve to control those who do not have money. I cannot think of any part of this book that is showing anything positive, and I cannot understand how this is a choice for our curriculum. Surely, there are better selections to celebrate heritage and cultural appreciation. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions or concerns. I don't usually speak up about book choices as I believe in exposure to a wide range of ideas. This one, however, is very unsettling to me in many ways. With so many kids struggling to fit in, for whatever reason makes them different, no matter what cultural differences we may have, I would hope that our curriculum would celebrate those differences." So I want to thank Beth for sharing those comments. There's a lengthy email that gave some very specific examples of parts of the book that she found to be troubling, and she did share that with our Director of Curriculum and of course with our Superintendent. I believe Bob, you have?
Yeah, so I just want to, I guess, respond because this is on the agenda for you to vote tonight, so I wanted to respond to some of the comments. And first, just a reminder of why we bring books here, you know, that I think just to take a big step back. And then the reason we developed this list and we started approving these novels and books that we're using in literature circles. A couple of years ago, when we started to identify teachers teaching novels, the same novels multiple times, so there wasn't a real articulated place for teachers to go into the district to have kind of a protected list of books aligned with curriculum. So that's kind of some of the background. This book specifically is being used within a literature circle for the first time, within a theme that's on embracing heritage. There's a process that does happen, where books don't just show up. They have to be read by at least one teacher. They make that recommendation to Becky Quinn, who reviews that as well, before they get to the Board of Education level. This book, however, was read by two teachers, both Catherine Owen and Brittany Cece in ELA sixth grade. It was selected because it's very relevant to the unit theme of embracing history. It has an Indian author from Canada now, but grew up and born in India. And the story includes an Indian family and a visit to India by a 12-year-old boy. I think it's important to note, this is written through the lens of a 12-year-old, so the perspective from that book is of a 12-year-old in an attempt to write in that fashion. While there's, while some of the descriptions of the novel do highlight what could be perceived by a reader as negative, the story also highlights positive features, talking about beautiful hotels and amazing food as well, so there's a balance to that as well. I think in looking at this book, it is very appropriate from both the Lexile level and reading level, multiple reviews on both Scholastic and the reading book, if you were to look at this book, that it's very appropriate for students. So I did want to at least give you some background before recommending it tonight.
Did all of the sixth graders read it this year?
No, they did not.
Okay, he suggested some.
So as they developed this, this theme, they found this book to be relevant, and it's one choice. So students had a choice, and I think we have, I think the number was nine. I did ask how many students were doing this within a literature circle, so I believe it was nine. The other thing I think is important to note, that if a parent does have an issue with context within a book, they certainly should reach out to the teacher, and we have modified selections of full-class novels if someone has religious belief or a concern of content that can be an appropriate first step in alleviating some of these concerns.
And there have been no other complaints?
No.
From Becky?
Okay.
All right, well, we really appreciate the input. Thank you, Bob, for giving an overview. It's not often that we have a concern about content, but it is nice to know that there is some choice that the parents can exercise if they felt there wasn't an appropriate book for their child.
And I would just like to add that Becky Quinn, our Director of Curriculum, did respond to Mrs. Hump.
Correct.
Okay, moving on to the approval of minutes. Can I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the January? Oh, I think I have the wrong one. Let's see. Sorry. The February since the February 20th, regular meetings?
Seven.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Lucott, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bros?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Kanzinger?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes. At this time, we'll share board committee updates if they're any applicable. The Audit Committee, Mary Kay?
I would just like to say that meeting is currently scheduled for May 10, I believe. I am not going to be able to make that meeting, and so I'm sharing trading messages with Mrs. Lucott and said, if other people can make it, she's welcome to keep it, but she may decide to change it based on other things that are happening.
Have you had a chance to reconfirm Audit Committee involvement from our community members who were on the committee last year?
I have not. I do not know who was on that committee. I didn't know that was what I was supposed to do.
Okay. Assuming that we're reappointing them to the committee for this coming year, it'd be a good idea to circle back with them, make sure that they can meet that commitment. The Board Policy Committee, Sharon?
Board Policy Meeting was moved to April 2 at 1 o'clock in Central Office with the same agenda as before, which is to review policy suggested changes to allow alcohol in designated locations at designated times in the district and to discuss the possibility of adopting a PDE waiver.
The Business Advisory Committee?
No report on that.
Capital Planning, I've given a couple of thorough reports. We have a meeting in April coming up. The Board Finance and Budget Committee?
Still trying to find a date in April that works for everybody, so I've got everybody but one, so I'm trying to find one that works for everybody. Got to re-propos some dates out.
Okay.
Another doodle poll.
We'll make it happen. It'll come together. And there's no report from Records Retention. The Treasurer's Report, at this point, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Ms. Lucott for the Treasurer's Report.
Thank you. The board members previously received their Treasurer's Financial Report for the month of February. I just want to hit a couple of highlights from that report that included your fund report, your bank reconciliation, your payment registers, check registers, and SM2 report. This month's receipts included about $10.2 million, which reflected that first half property tax payment. So again, timing issues with property tax payments. Typically, you see advances in January and February and settlements, settlement payments in March. Being new to the district, I'm still learning the rhythms of those receipts, but I did notice that Kioga County does pay on the 15th of each month this year. So we did receive those three payments. It appears to be on track with our expectations for that. I'm still awaiting the Kioga County settlement report from them in March. And as we expected, we saw very light collections in advance, but then the settlement report really brought a hole. So in separate reports, I have provided that information to the board, and I will continue to keep you updated on that as well. The district, in addition to primarily receiving property tax receipts this month, received funding for open enrollment, full-day kindergarten tuition, preschool tuition. We did receive our federal reimbursements that we requested for prior month expenditures, auxiliary service funds, and just wanted to point out too, that the district collected $69,000 in lunchroom fund receipts and made that transfer of $102,500 that the board approved from the general fund into the permanent improvement fund. The expenditure highlights for February included some overtime listed there as $11,426, substitute teacher costs of about $12,000, and some supplemental contract payments in the amount of $48,850. The total general fund receipts were $9 million. Expenditures were 2.6. Again, you see that variance in February with the property tax receipts coming in. The revenue for all funds was $11.1 million, again, 10.2 of that being property tax. Expenditures for all funds, 4.3. The capital improvement fund, that's your fund for your facilities, projects in there. The balance, your cash balance at the end of the month was $16.6 million. So we're seeing that go down, as we're receiving payouts for the project of about $1.4 million a month now. The lunchroom fund has a balance at the end of the month of $381,000. That's pretty adequate for that fund. Excel Tech and their federal funds are always going to run a negative balance at the end of the month with pending reimbursements. And positive cash balances in all your athletic and student activity funds, so that's what you want to see. The other reports in here, I did spend some time looking at your SM2 reports. The board has some concerns about how those were reflected in this report. There's actually two reports in here that show SM2 numbers, which is your, I don't know what SM2 stands for, I'm sorry, I just use it as the name of the report. But what it really is showing you is your projections or your forecast versus your actuals. So there's two reports in here that show that. The first one is a system-generated report, and so at the beginning of the year, someone needs to go in and load each month's forecasted amount for each revenue and expenditure category that's included in your forecast. And as Mrs. O'Toole pointed out a few months ago, there was some discrepancies in that report, and what I found was the January and February numbers for the property taxes were not loaded in there. So it was skewing all of the numbers. I went in this month and loaded those numbers, so.
Yes, I can tell that. I can tell. So that bottom line is.
On the ivory-colored report, your ending cash balance for the year to date so far is $524,875 below what you forecasted or where you expected to be at the end of February. So your cash balance is lower by about a half a million than what you expected it to be at this time.
With only two months of data.
No, this is July through February.
July through February, so fiscal year. But what that's really showing you, again, is the timing of, because if you look through the entire column, you'll see the biggest variance being in the property tax. So it's waiting for that March settlement payment of property taxes. I did verify that number, though, against the other report in your packet that shows your SM2 actuals and estimates in the purple cash flow. And that's the one that you pointed out that is actually overriding your estimate each month with your actual, so that it updates the graph at the bottom of the page. So I went back and looked at that report, set up a chart that showed the beginning of the year. If you actually look at August, you'll see accurate estimates in all of the months. If you look at it for February's report, and then you compare them, and I did, each month, go through, compare, did the subtraction, and at the end of February, you do get the $524,875, less than estimated cash balance. So again, you're a little bit behind where you expected to be at this point in the year based on really those property taxes coming in later than anticipated. Okay? So I felt comfortable after reviewing that information this month, that your district is actually on track. Questions about, you know, levy cycle and cash balances and, you know, expectations for property taxes, I think your district's right on track. I think the numbers were very accurate that were put in, with the exception of some omissions in there that we've caught up now in the system. Okay? So that's my report on your financials. I think they were fairly complete in here as well.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
I appreciate you looking into it and finding those, you know, omissions and so that now, the ending balance numbers on the SM2 and the ivory and the purple are the same, whereas last month they weren't, so.
Right, right. So they are accurate now.
Yes.
Great. And the good news is we are on track to have the revenues that we were forecasting. Our five-year forecast is still intact, as well as our levy cycle commitment that we made to the community.
Right. And I did look at those property tax payments through March. Again, I haven't received the Kioga County payment, so I don't know where we are with that. Once I get that, I did provide everyone with a spreadsheet that, again, you see in real time, so as I update it, you'll see the update of the Kioga County property tax going in there, and as well, I'll be able to estimate the state's subsidy for the homestead rollbacks. So we'll put that number in there as well. And then my understanding, again, of the timing of the cycle with Kioga County is you may receive an advance payment in June, May or June. I think last year, it actually came the end of May, that reflects that second half payment of property taxes. So you'll see more money in this fiscal year as well. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
Is that conclusion? Yes, yes, thank you.
Can I have a motion for consent to items 7A through Q?
Seven.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Lucott, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bros?
Yes.
Mr. Kanzinger?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Can I have a motion for Superintendent's Recommendations 8A and B?
Seven.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Hunt, would you like to speak to these?
Sure. Item A is a contract with Mentor Schools. That's to provide support for accounts payable for the remainder of the, probably the remainder of the school year, but, you know, along with the treasurer's search, we'll evaluate the timing of that. I want to thank Bart Petrus, who stepped forward to support the district and did a fabulous job. She just has, I think, had enough of working two jobs and wants to take a step back, so we really appreciate everything she's done for the district. And I saw them, as of Monday, in the office, and they're transitioning currently, so everything can go very smoothly the next couple of months.
Please convey our gratitude as well.
Sure.
And as well, Candy. People really pitched in to get the department over some bumps in the road, and it's been very, very helpful.
Absolutely. A and B is the approval resolution for the Tiger Perks Coffee Shop. This has a not-too-zealous $75,000. Just a reminder, we do have support organizations that are evaluating this currently. We also know, as of tonight, the construction management firm that is being awarded this contract is going to take their fee off in a deduct change order of $10,000, so that will be forthcoming, just because they believe strongly in the project. Also, when I went and presented to the Booster Club, there was a gentleman named David Haynes in the audience. He owns a professional electric company, and he's offered to donate his services, so that will be another six grand that will come off in a deduct change order as well. We do know, we have confirmation from Tiger Perks of a minimum of $25,000, and I know other organizations are.
Tiger Prep, right.
Tiger Prep, sorry.
I might have said it.
And other organizations are kind of wrapping up their approval process, so I believe this, this project will be carried forward with independent funding.
Entirely, or do you expect this?
I think entirely.
Almost entirely, okay.
I think entirely.
That's great. Nice job. And again, I know you're going to express our gratitude to all of them for stepping up. It's a great project.
Absolutely. And concludes that, recommendations.
Okay. Ms. Lucott, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bros?
Yes.
Mr. Kanzinger?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes. Can I please have a motion for Treasurer's Recommendations 9A through D?
Seven.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Lucott, would you like to speak to these?
The first recommendation is to approve the financial report that you received that we discussed a value update. The second resolution is prepared by our council, authorizing the reallocation of a 1.5-mill portion of the school district's 4.5-mill share of inside millage to a permanent improvement fund, commencing intact year '19, with collection to begin in January 2020. This was part of the discussion at the March 6 meeting as a result of the permanent improvement committee's discussion. The resolution has been drafted with a 1.5-mill level of trades, I guess, moving 1.5 mills of inside millage that obviously can continue to be discussed at this meeting and can be revised. The next item is a required resolution for the district to accept the tax rates prepared by the Kioga County Budget Commission. These rates are calculated by our county fiscal office and presented to the district to accept, based on our tax budget that was approved in January at the organizational These originally reflected no move of inside millage. They were, again, it was prepared based on your tax budget. So I contacted the county fiscal office, I let them know that we were considering a resolution to move 1.5 mills from our inside millage to permanent improvement, and requested that, again, they calculate those rates for us. So he graciously did that, sent me that resolution as well to put on this agenda. If for some reason the board decides not to approve the 1.5-mill move from inside millage to permanent improvement, we do still have the original resolution that was prepared by the county that the board can accept.
So why don't we come back to that after we've discussed the millage amount, and then I think it'll be clearer how to proceed.
Yeah, yeah, and I can certainly give you some direction on how we should proceed based on the discussion and what the board's decision is with Resolution D. Resolution D is a then-and-now for the school resource officer. We have an agreement in place this year, I believe, that has been in place since the beginning of the year for a school resource officer. We're responsible for paying the village of Chagrin Falls for that position. We do receive reimbursements for that. What you're seeing is simply the then-and-now certificate because the district didn't have the proper purchase orders in place at the beginning of the year, and we're now being invoiced for them so we can make payment.
So we're going to do this a little bit backwards. Bob, would you speak a little bit more to item D and the agreement that we have in place and how that's structured?
Yeah, sure. So we are built back from, and I didn't bring the exact figures with me tonight, I apologize, but we're built back from Chagrin Falls for the school resource officer. We each kind of carry a share of that. South Russell also is participating in that agreement. You will invoice South Russell, so I think that's what Candy was referencing, so we'll go ahead and do that sometime with Chagrin as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think it's important to underscore that it's a shared responsibility. The district is the majority, carrying the majority of the financial arrangement, with next being the village of Chagrin Falls, and then with South Russell pitching in a little bit as well. So it's just kind of an odd arrangement where we reimburse the village because they're actually paying the officer, and then South Russell reimburses us for their small portion. So that's what this is all about.
Right.
Okay, let's back up then to the inside millage discussion and see if we, I want to open it up for discussion about the, we had a very thorough discussion at our last board meeting, we had a very thorough discussion at our capital planning meeting. We've been talking about setting board policy to allocate funds to permanent improvement for capital projects that help us maintain our facilities within the district for over a couple of years now. So I think we're in a very good place, where we're all very well-educated. We've had three board-level discussions about it, and now the rubber hits the road, and we decide what amount of millage we're comfortable with. Just as a reminder, the recommendation that came from the Capital Planning Committee, and thank you, Tefill, for your work on this, is that we should be thinking about, more than thinking about, we should be setting aside somewhere in the range of $2 million, maybe even a little bit more than that, each year for facility projects, understanding that in any given year, we might not spend that entire $2 million, but there may be a subsequent year where we need in excess of the $2 million. So on balance, if we can work toward that goal as a board, it will serve our district well in setting our facilities up to be well-maintained for our students and our staff. So.
This is one tool that we can use in combination with others in terms of accounting and setting aside funds.
Right.
To work towards that $2.2 million. This does not get us all the way. It gets us still, it's actually still beneath what we currently have budgeted in the five-year forecast for the next several years.
Great.
So it's money that we've already allocated towards permanent improvement anyway from our budget.
And it's directing it. And Ms. Lucott, I should let you speak to your recommendation that we, you know, move the 1.5 mills of inside mills into the PI fund. I didn't give you a chance to speak to how much that amounts to each year compared to our budget in the five-year forecast, for example, that we have set aside for facility projects.
Right. I sent out some information to the board this afternoon, really in preparation for this meeting, didn't want to have to mess with the technology and putting it up on the board. So if you had a chance to look at that, you'll see that this year, based on the inside millage that we calculated on our total assessed valuation. So if our total inside village was about $2.5 million, the value of 1 mill is about $555,000. The value of 1.5 mills, again, about $833 million. This year to date, we have spent 900...
$33,000, sorry.
I'm sorry.
$833,000.
This year to date, we have spent about $913,000 on permanent improvements. We forecast $1.5 million in transfers this year from the general fund into that PI fund. The committee and the Board have reviewed the list of projects for permanent improvements and also are familiar with the timing of that many being summer projects. So this is $913,000 in projects, some that were completed last summer, some that have been done during the year. Doesn't include those planned for this summer. And then, you know, Mrs. Garvey kind of commented on the information that I sent out and said, "What about forecasting going forward?" And I think that's the important thing to note, that even with conservative estimates of a 1% increase in assessed valuation, which was lower than it has been in the previous years, but, you know, housing market uncertain. So assuming a 1% increase in total assessed valuation and the value of the mill then having $840,000 to $866,000, well below those forecasted amounts in the next five years of $1 million, $1.5 million, and $1.2 million coming out of your general fund and going into your PI fund. So again, I was comfortable with the 1.5 mills that was discussed based on this financial perspective. That's why I tried to share that with you, just so you could see it was well below what you had planned. As, again, the conversation had been, this is just one item in your tool chest for addressing your PI expenditures.
And just to clarify, another point that was discussed at the last meeting, the Board does have the authority to move back if that's necessary down the road as well.
Right. And it would be for future collections.
Correct.
So once the money is collected, it will stay in that fund. But if there were some reason, if we had a failed levy or some reason we needed to change that. So this is...
Right. Again, my conversations with the county Board that, you know, the Board makes changes as they would with a levy. If a levy or new levy came on the ballot up through November, as long as we notify the county before November of these changes, they would take effect in January, that January collection, which then has the impact of half of the fiscal year. So even these numbers that you see on here, you know, $840,000 for next year would not necessarily, I'm sorry, $840,000 for the 1.5 mills next year would not be fully realized in fiscal 2020.
That assumes a full year's collection.
Correct.
Right, so...
So, you know, know that that's going forward. And then the Board can always make a decision in 2020, next fiscal year, to adjust the level of village.
And that's not our intent. I think, you know, we are, we're saying that maintaining our facilities is important. We think it's important to have money set aside specifically for that purpose that isn't subject necessarily to a lot of variability. And this is a piece of, not the entire budget, and also understanding that what we had budgeted in our five-year forecast is even much less than what the Capital Planning Committee was recommending that we try to get towards. So as we look at our October forecast, we may be seeing if we can find a way...
Right.
It could be in November. It's not our option. We may be looking at ways to try to even increase that a little bit further. And then the last thing, I guess, I would want to say, and then I'll open it up for everybody else, is that the Capital Planning Committee is going to be working at the next meeting on, we recognize that we need to now have a process for money that is in this account and approvals of projects that are going to be paid for with money through that account. Whereas our previous process had been, when we make the transfer, we're also approving the projects that are tied to that dollar amount at the same time. So we do recognize that there's a need for us to revisit our process and firm that up. So is there any comment? I know we had a pretty robust discussion at the last meeting.
Yeah. Well, let me, I mean, yeah, I know we discussed the forecast. You voiced some concerns about the five-year projections. Are you, are you okay with it now? I mean, is it...
I am reluctantly okay, because I asked at the last meeting that this not be on this agenda because I wanted to come back, revisit. I was hoping, like, at this meeting, we would hear from Candy. I'm so glad that our revenues are where they want to be. I wanted a much bigger picture. I wanted to see the May update to the five-year forecast. I wanted to, you know, really see our revenues and expenses projected out and see, when are we going to have the next levy? So I was really hoping for that. I would reluctantly support this tonight because of the fact that we can do this and we can, you know, change it in the future. And the line item where we're transferring from the general fund to permanent improvement fund, we can change that number. But I'm disappointed that it was put on this agenda when I specifically asked last time, like, couldn't this wait? Because I don't, I don't, I mean, I'm disappointed. I didn't understand. So I understood your request last time to be that you would like to make sure that the timing issue that you identified in SM2 was not a real issue with our receivables. And so my understanding is that you were going to work with Ms. Lucott to get clarity on that and that when that had been done, that you would be comfortable with it. I'm just saying, that's my understanding. I know, but it was on the agenda at 1.5 when we didn't come up with that number. I just feel like we didn't finish that discussion because we were going to come back to it, and then yet it's on the agenda. So I'm reluctantly approving it. I would hope in the future, we can sometimes say, like, okay, wait a minute. Yeah, there's no reason this had to be on this agenda. It could have waited.
Okay. Any other comments? So as Ms. Lucott pointed out, the 1.5 is a placeholder, subject to our deliberation this evening. Unless I hear any other comments, I'm going to assume that the 1.5 is agreeable to everybody. I can go ahead and put that forward unless somebody wants to amend the resolution.
Agreed.
All right. And then the next?
I have to roll.
Will you roll on that?
Oh, sorry. Should we go ahead and take the roll call on that? So Ms. Lucott, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Bros?
Yes.
Mr. Reink?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Panzinger?
Yes.
And then for Item C, Ms. Lucott, now you can, that's very clean because you have a form of the tax resolution that is 1.5 mills. The Board is now voting to accept that. Accept that from the county. Any other discussion about Item D?
Just took the roll on.
Oh, did we take the roll on everything?
Yes.
Okay.
We're all done.
All right. I'm sorry. I'll catch up with these guys. Sorry, my computer's on me. It wants to restart. Okay. Any other business?
The only thing I would bring to your attention, we had a second meeting of kind of groundbreaking planning for the intermediate school. We originally were looking at a September date. The committee felt that moving it up before the school year made sense for a lot of various reasons, but more of a placeholder in the calendar. If you can look at August 17 on your calendar for me, please, and let me know how that date works. Thought being we would open the building before students arrived that following week.
Works for me. I will not be able to attend.
Each if you'd like to start a school, give me as much time as possible.
I cannot.
Now you're ruling the date out.
Just the groundbreaking.
So this is August 17?
I won't be there.
A reward.
Did you, has Alumni Association been notified?
No.
Okay. But we're still doing the, we're having meetups. This is just...
Yeah, we're still doing something on all kinds of tours.
All right. So I don't think they'll, I don't know that they'll be ready up there. I hope.
Call their screens.
Yeah.
Any other business? Any other other business? Okay. I'd like to have, well, I'd like to have a motion for executive session.
Wait, first, you need to announce the next meeting.
I'm sorry. I'm just throwing off my game.
I got you.
All right. I'd like to announce the next meeting. We have a special meeting on Tuesday, April 2, right now scheduled for 5:00 PM in the Sands Community Room. And then we have a regular meeting on Wednesday, April 3, also at 5:00 PM in the Sands Community Room. Can I have a motion for executive session?
In accordance with O. Howard Revisco's 121.22, the Chagrin Falls Board of Education will go into executive session for the sole purpose of the consideration of the following matter in the limit.
And I'd like to invite Christopher Moore and Rebecca Jenkins into executive session with us this evening. All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
No, not until...
Oh, to executive session. All right.
But to all of you, enjoy the sun while it's...
I just want to say, we don't expect to have any action following the executive session. We'll be adjourned in a meeting. Thank you all.
Dismissed.
And maybe dismissed.